I have just stolen her motion, that I'm gonna read it. That in order to comply with the section 2.2371 to D of the Court of Virginia, it is necessary for all to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on April 24, 2017, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and all such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closing meeting. Is that a motion? Move by Mrs. Strauss, seconded by Mr. McElvin. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous with some Board members missing. Okay, now, we're gonna have a discussion on ERFC. That we have two hours for dispersion of a discussion, so we'll go until about quarter after four o'clock. We have another...
Mr. Moon, can you just update everybody for the schedule?
Okay, we have a right after two-hour discussion of ERFC, we are going to be having another closed meeting for the Board to go upstairs, and then we'll return. Hopefully, that will be done in half an hour. We'll be returning back to this room to have a budget discussion. And then, if you look at the our agenda for today, published agenda for today, we are also supposed to have a governance update, and also audit committee discussion. Those two meetings will be postponed to some other time or replaced by written reports. That's basically scheduled for the rest of the day. For ERFC discussion, I wanna start with a reminder to my colleagues and the members in public that we do have ERFC action scheduled to be voted on on this Thursday night. So this is the last time we're gonna have, we have an opportunity to discuss about ERFC action. So it is, it is an important discussion, obviously, we are having. And then, I just wanna remind us again that that motion will be taking a vote on, taking an action on this Thursday night, is the motion that was postponed from February 9th Board meeting, to have together more information, to have a further discussion on ERFC options. So this is, we have a pending motion to be voted on Thursday night. If anybody member wants to have, or wanna propose an amendment to the motion on the table, you know, please let your colleagues know in public as soon as possible. And thank you. With that, let me call on Jean for presentation and introduction of other presenters.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. For those in the audience who don't know me, I'm Jean Carr. I'm the Executive Director and Chief Investment Officer for ERFC, the Educational Employees Supplemental Retirement System. And what are, we are here today to explain, we can go to the next slide. We are to explain the analyses that were requested by the School Board on February 9th, and they were provided on March 31st. So the information that the School Board requested was an analysis of fund management alternatives, for example, the mix of active and passive that could produce savings for the fund without harm to the interest of the employees. And these studies were contained, were to contain an analysis and justification of the ERFC investment choices, our results net of fees, and those comparison any active management selections against the index, and they were to include results for no less than year-to-date, trailing 12-month, three-year, five-year, 10-year for those periods. The most recent returns that we had available at the time of the March 31st reporting were for the period ending February 28th, so you'll see those returns today. We do have updated numbers for March 31st, so we will comment on those returns as well. And finally, the School Board directed us to give you the fiscal impact of a rule of 90 eligibility requirement, and that was to be calculated for both new hires and for non vested employees. So our actuary has completed that analysis. We did provide a significant amount of material in March, and in the slides that we have to cover today, the slides that I'm going through will be posted. I believe they're the fifth item on Board Docs Investment Philosophy and Process. So we aren't gonna cover all of the information on the slides, but we will provide key takeaways on selected slides, and we will explain terms as we go along. Just like other disciplines like education, technology, legal, we have our own terminology in the investment world and the actuarial world, so we will explain terms. So now, I'd like to introduce the presenters that we have for this afternoon. It's been a pleasure working with these three individuals, and they represent over 25 years of actuarial experience and only over 50 years of investments experience. So ERFC is very grateful to have them as a resource. First of all, to my left, we have Mr. Doug Mosley. He's a partner with New England Pension Consultants, NEPC is an investment consulting firm. They have over 300 clients, they have over $950 million under advisement. Mr. Mosley has been within NEPC since 1998, and he also worked with Massachusetts PRIM, which is a $21 billion public pension plan, and before that, he was with State Street. To my right is Mr. Alkaram Aladini. He is a Partner and Consulting Actuary in the Retirement Investment Division of Aon Consulting, and he's also the local practice leader for their Mid-Atlantic practice. He holds a degree from the University of Toronto, and he is a Fellow in the Society of Actuaries. He has over 25 years of experience consulting for public plans. He's also consulted for not-for-profit and for Fortune 100 companies. And he was one of the individuals that worked on the retirement security study that you commissioned, and he presented to you in May of last year on the results of that retirement security study. And then, to Mr. Mosley's left, we have Mr. Michael Burke here. He was appointed by the School Board to the ERFC Board back in 2013. He's a Managing Director with Stifel, which is a 225-year-old wealth management and investment firm. He joined Stifel as part of its acquisition of Barclays. Mr. Burke at Barclays was Managing Director for the Eastern Region. He was also Head of the Private Wealth Division at Deutsche Bank, and was with Morgan Stanley for 15 years. So he has a considerable amount of investment knowledge to bring to the ERFC Board of Trustees. So before I turn it over to Mr. Mosley, what I want to cover in my remarks are the School Board's request to understand our investment process and the investment choices that we've made. I will also provide the process that we use to monitor investment performance. Mr. Mosley then is gonna, to go over the historical results of the fund that you asked for on a net basis, so he'll cover year-to-date, trailing 12-month, three-year, five-year, seven-year, 10-year. And he will also go over what NEPC is looking at in terms of forward-looking returns. And he will, his discussion will include what you asked for in terms of active versus passive investing. Mr. Aladini will then, after you get all of this investment information, what does that mean for you all in terms of your funding of the plan and what the, what it does to the employer contribution rate? And then, we will wrap up with a review of the options that you've been considering since last May, and then with the additional information of the cost savings with the rule of 90. Does it sound like a plan? Okay. First of all, the investment process for the Board, and I was at an investment conference yesterday in Arlington where we had two attorneys speak on fiduciary responsibilities, and they kept saying, "All you need is a process, a process, a process, and follow it, and you can be, illustrate that you've fulfilled your fiduciary responsibility." So I think you'll come away from this thinking that the Board does have a very deliberate investment process. ERFC and the Board of Trustees was established by the Board of Supervisors in 1973, and that code outlined what the 10 functions of the Board of Trustees were, one of which was the responsibility to invest the funds, and those funds had to be invested in accordance with fiduciary law and the Commonwealth of Virginia. And there's also the requirement in the Commonwealth of Virginia for diversification. So, for example, it would not be in compliance with the Board's fiduciary responsibility if they invested 100% of the funds in the S&amp;P 500 Stock Index. That was an index that lost 56% of its value in 17 months during the '08-'09 financial crisis. And I don't think you would have been happy if we came to you and said we lost 56% of our members' funds. So that would not be considered in compliance with the fiduciary responsibility. So what they've done in order to fulfill their responsibilities is to develop an investment process, a policy, investment guidelines, and they've had to do this all within the goal of meeting a 7.25% net investment return assumption. That's what the actuary uses to develop the employer contribution rate, and so that's the goal of the Board of Trustees, is to meet that investment return assumption without taking undue risk. The trustees recognize that this is their members' money, they take their job very seriously, and take the financial well-being of our members very seriously. So they know that they can look at the past, that that will guide their knowledge, but they acknowledge that the future is gonna be different than the past, and with the benefit of 2020 hindsight, it's always easy to say that they could have made different investment decisions. It's very analogous to FCPS and its weather-related decisions. So you know, you hire your expert meteorologists, you take into account what all the conditions could be, you make the decision to close schools because it's in the best interest of the children and your staff, and then the next day, when you only get an interest, no, you second-guess your decision. So that's exactly the process that the Board of Trustees is using in hiring experts and making the best possible investment decisions that they can make, not knowing what the future investment markets are going to do. So the next slide, to answer your question on the justification for the investment choices, it's helpful to review what has happened in the markets, what asset class of returns have been, and what the actions the Board of Trustees took during different periods of time. And you'll hear the term "asset class" a lot this afternoon. What that means is a type of investment that the Board uses. So it could be a bond, could be a stock, could be real estate, but we are investing in those different asset classes. So it was easy to be an investor back in the 1990s. All you had to do was invest in stocks, bonds, public real estate. You could easily get a double-digit return. It was even easier in the 80s because bonds were returning double-digit returns, so you could invest 100% in bonds. And during that time, it's unbelievable to me what the funded ratio did in a short period of time. We went from 78% in 1995 to over 100% at the end of the century, to 110% June 30th of 2000. So you can see how favorable the investment markets were during that period of time. Then, unfortunately, in 1999 to 2000, the internet, which had been causing those favorable investment markets, we had a burst in the internet bubble, and ERFC's large capitalization equity portfolio by itself was down 25%. And by "large capitalization equities," I mean investing in stocks of companies that are worth more than $10 billion. So these are big companies that took significant declines. So our funded ratio declined during that period, went down to as low as 85%. And what the ERFC Board was doing, and what public pension trustees across the country were doing, is saying, "We can't have this much equity risk in our portfolio. We can't afford to have our portfolios decline." And so they started adding additional asset classes to protect themselves against those asset declines. And it was working for a while. You can see the asset classes that were added, some private real estate, international markets. The funded ratio went back up to 88% by 2007, and then we all know what happened in 2008 and 2009. Financial crisis, our market value went from $2 billion down to $1.4 billion, even though we were widely diversified. Really was no place to hide during that time period. Almost all asset classes went down. Our funded ratio went down to 76%. And we have continued then since that time to try to reduce the equity risk that's in our portfolio, to make sure that we're not subject to severe market declines. So in my March 31st report, you can get justification for all of these different asset classes that we've added. I'm not gonna go through those this afternoon. So the end result is on Slide 7. That's what our current asset structure is. We are broadly diversified among several asset classes. Column 2 shows what our target is in each of these, and where we actually are, we're very close to what the Board has set up as targets. And then, the market value as of February 28th is shown in the last column. So, for example, to illustrate the diversification in the stock portfolio, we have large capitalization stocks, we also have small capitalization stocks, which are investments in companies that are under $2 billion, and then mid-capitalization in between the $2 billion and the $10 billion. Other categories that we have in equities are international stocks, so these are in developed countries, so countries that have developed markets and economies, so countries like Canada, United Kingdom, Germany. And then, we also have a small percentage in emerging market stocks, and these are stocks that are seeing, companies that are seeing a rapid growth in industrialization in technology, like India, China. But we realize that those markets are riskier, but offer a higher return, and so we have only an allocation of 3% to the emerging market category. And then, the other asset classes here that we have are explained in my report, but the key takeaway here is that there is a process that the Board has developed to analyze investments. They develop an asset allocation, they have a formal asset liability study every five years to review this, and then in between, every month, they look at the asset allocation to see if they should make any changes in the allocation. So one example, when we see interest rates decline as dramatically as they have recently, and the Board knows there's probably nowhere but interest rates to go up, interest rates going up means your bond prices go down, they did develop a strategy to try to protect the fund against those increases in interest rates. Then on Slide 8, the Board also has a process for evaluating the performance of the fund and of their managers. They receive monthly reporting from NEPC on the total fund and on the individual managers. These are both gross and net of fees. And then, on a quarterly basis, they compare themselves against peers. So the peer universe that they use is what's called the Investor Force Public Defined Benefit Universe. There are 76 public plans in that. And so, we do do monitoring both to indices and to our peers. So our returns net of fees have exceeded their policy index for year-to-date, one, five, and seven-year periods ending February 28th. And I'll turn the discussion over to Mr. Mosley, who will review that. I think you will be happy with the information that he's presented. I know many of you have seen the fiscal year returns, which were not favorable, but the calendar year numbers were improved, and 2017 has gotten off to a good start, so we've had very good returns year-to-date this year. Today, the market's up international 2%, domestic up 1% because of the vote in France. I wish it was the last day of April, and our returns for the period ending April would be good as well. But you can see that these are very endpoint-sensitive numbers. The fiscal year returns happened right after Brexit, so those numbers were not as favorable. So you really have to look at varying time periods, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Mosley, who has more information on the returns.
Great, thank you.
For those of you that are following online, the presentation is called Follow Up February 9th NEPC School Board Presentation. It's a PDF document, if you wanted to follow online.
Great, thank you very much. So I'd like to thank the School Board for affording us the opportunity to come in and talk about the investment program that ERFC, ERFC's Retirement Board oversees. Maybe just briefly give you a couple more comments about NEPC. I know Jean did a great intro. We work with, as she said, over 300 clients. That includes about 65 public pension funds. About half of those are of the same size or bigger than ERFC, including large state, and we work with 14 or 15 different state retirement systems, and city and county retirement systems in, you know, New York City, Chicago, Dallas, St. Louis, Seattle, San Francisco. And then, locally here, we work with a group of clients that you may be familiar with, including the Fairfax County Uniformed Retirement Board, the Montgomery County Public School Retirement Board, which is a newer client for us, the City of Richmond, the Womata Pension Fund, and Baltimore and Anorundal Counties in Maryland. So starting on page 3 of our presentation, we just made some highlights that I, you know, Jean has made several of these points already, and I'm gonna go through one of the higher-level performance pages next in a second. But generally, I think we look at performance for all of our clients, and we compare them to the benchmarks that they've set from a policy standpoint, but we also benchmark each of our clients versus their peer groups, and we spend a fair amount of time talking with our clients about what they're doing maybe differently than some of their peers, and that's a regular part of the conversation each quarter. Generally, the returns for the ERFC plan have been competitive. You know, there have definitely been periods where, in a one-year cycle, that the plan would underperform some of its peers, but over the 7, 10, and the 15-year returns that I'll go through in a second, you know, generally, the peer group rankings have been pretty close to median, and over the 15 years, I think they're close to the top third. I think the, we don't get rankings for the February period end, but for the quarterly period ends. And the December rankings, I think the 15-year return was ranked in the 35th percentile of that peer group. And the peer group that we look at for ERFC is public funds greater than $1 billion. And so, NEPC, the data we provide is not just comparing ERFC to our own clients, we actually share data across a platform with 14 or 15 of our competitors. So the data coming into that is from lots of different plans that we do not advise. You know, just sticking with kind of the high points on this page 3, I think in the discussion about active versus passive management, you know, we believe that ERFC has chosen a path, an appropriate use of passive management, predominantly in the US equity category. You know, I think every time that we've had conversations about a manager, or about a new asset class, or anything that's going on in the portfolio, that, you know, that's something the Board, I think, regularly revisits. You know, and the Board, I think, has had a lot of success with active management in most categories. You know, the large cap, US large cap is one of the areas where I think there's been a little bit more of a, you know, a struggle with active management, and the returns that we're gonna go over in a second actually include the passive component mixed in with the active managers, and there have been periods where the Board has taken action to replace a manager that's been underperforming. You know, generally, the policy structure, Jean did a great job of talking about the history and that funded status, and I think that ERFC is not alone in that experience and how frustrating it can be when markets, you know, crack significantly. And the learning experience, I think, that we've had as investors and our clients have had is that after, you know, the first market correction in 2001 and 2002, a lot of plans did what ERFC did, which is they said they wanted to revisit how they've allocated their asset, the amount of concentration that they have in the US equity market, and diversify that into other equity markets and alternative assets. And I think they took a great step in putting private real estate in place first, and then when NEPC was subsequently brought on board, which, you know, was just before, I think, the second financial crisis, we went about helping them build out a private equity portfolio and add some inflation-sensitive asset classes like commodities and some of the other, what we call multi-asset class portfolios that they have put in place. So I'll talk about that as I go through. And I, you know, again, I would say that ERFC is not unsimilar to other plans in that there is, you know, regularly frustration about the returns that we've been able to earn, the markets, in particular since the financial crisis. You know, pre-'08, we had cash returns of 3% or 4%, bond returns of 5% or 6%, and equity returns that were pretty consistently closer to 8% or 9%, and alternative assets had done well. And since then, with, you know, eight or nine years now of cash rates or short-term interest rates being below 1%, it's started to catch up, I think, with a lot of public pension funds. It's acted almost like a tax on their returns, in a sense. And so, that combined with some, you know, longevity experience that has resulted in slight changes on the actuarial side, has led to more pressure on funding the plan. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn to page 4. So as Jean mentioned, the Board, the ERFC Board regularly reviews, on a monthly and quarterly basis, various performance reports. This is a high-level report to give you a sense of how the portfolio is allocated and how it is returned net of fees. The Board also looks at various reporting risk statistics, not only on their plan, including attribution, but also on individual managers and categories they have exposure to. So the reporting package that they go through is much more detailed than we had time to go through in this meeting. So this page is very busy, so I'll just try to explain it a little bit. The number shaded in blue at the top, it says ERFC Composite. You can see the associated market value is $2.2 billion. The returns, as you go across the page, represent the net returns for the ERFC's entire investment program over the different time periods ended in February. Each of the green-shaded rows below that represent an individual asset class composite or grouping, so traditional equities, traditional fixed income, real estate, private equity, et cetera. And then, the unshaded row right beneath each of the green-shaded rows is the benchmark for that particular category. So I mentioned that ERFC benchmarks themselves in a number of different ways, both in terms of risk and return. From a return standpoint, right below the ERFC Composite, shaded in blue, you can see we've got two benchmarks there, the Policy Index and the Allocation Index. Both of those use passive management proxies as part of examining how the portfolio's policy targets have performed. And then, because it's impossible to keep your portfolio allocated perfectly, week to week, month to month, to your policy, we actually track the Allocation Index, which takes, instead of the static weightings in the Policy Index, which, you know, those, sorry, those weightings are changed regularly, but the Allocation Index tracks where your dollars were actually invested. So it's gonna reflect over and underweightings, month to month, in the portfolio. And so, generally, what you wanna see is that your Policy Index and your Allocation Index should be pretty closely aligned in terms of performance, and with the ERFC portfolio, given your cash flows and your allocation, it's been relatively easy to keep pretty tight to those targets. So there hasn't been that much deviation between your allocation performance, or where you've been actually allocated, again, using passive management as a proxy, versus your actual results. And so, when we compare those three rows at the top, what we wanna see is, you know, a similar relationship to what you see in the one-year column, where you have, your goal is to outperform your Policy Index, although there are definitely nuances to understanding how that, you know, year-to-year, how that plays out. And generally, your goal is to have the allocation of the Policy Index perform similarly, and you're outperform them over time. So then, looking at each of the asset classes, one of the other, you know, the factors I think that we wanted to talk about was the, you know, Jean mentioned the endpoint sensitivity of some of these numbers. When you look at them, when the Board examines them, they're really looking to compare short and long-term performance, because whether we're talking about the performance of a manager or a whole category, we wanna understand what's driving the performance. And, you know, while it does seem counterintuitive, in some cases, when a category is doing very poorly, it generally means the category has, the pricing has declined and has become, you know, on comparison from a relative standpoint, more attractive. Whereas, when a category is doing very well, that's generally when the Board and NEPC would have a conversation about whether we should be rebalancing back to some of the underperforming categories. And it's interesting, you know, I guess, being here, talking about the program, when you look at some of the performance of some of these asset categories in green, you know, I think one of the bigger sources of, you know, less, lower return in the last several years has been the performance of non-US equities versus US equities. And one of the reasons that we look at the longer-term numbers is to see some of these differences in short versus the long term, and there's several examples on this page that I think are great. The... The emerging markets equity category, which I think many of you may be familiar with from investing, you know, some of your own money or your 401Ks or other investments that you have. You can see the 10-year return for that benchmark is 1.4%. I'm sorry, right below it, it's 2.9%. When you look at the return over 15 years, you see that that number is 9.7%. It's just, you know, the cyclicality of those returns over different periods. You know, even four or five years ago, the long-term numbers for emerging markets were far in excess of the US markets. And when I get to the asset class discussion and talk about the asset allocation decision, I'll talk a little bit more about that in terms of our assumptions about those markets. Another example is real estate, for example, where you have the 10-year return includes those two, you know, the market correction, obviously, the financial crisis. But when you go out to 15 years, you see the return for that category is over 10%. So, the categories that ERFC has added, in general, have been seeking higher return and better balance in the portfolio. And I'll talk a little bit more about that when I go through the asset allocation. If I go to the next page, page five, just talk a little bit about, Gina talked about the asset class targets that we have in the portfolio right now. And the board has just, in the last six months, been completed an asset liability study. And that's really where you take, and you talk about your asset performance and your expectations, and you mirror that, or you integrate that with a discussion about how your liabilities are growing and the assumptions you're using there, and what the projected cash flows are on the liability side and how they're impacted by different, you know, policy portfolios on the investment side. The current portfolio is laid out here with NEPC's 30-year expected return and risk numbers at the bottom, shaded in kind of like a blue-gray color. The expected return of the current portfolio is 7.26%. And I would say to most people when I present that, that using two decimal points implies a level of precision that does not exist when it comes to projecting the future. But I'll talk a little bit about how we go about that in a second. And that is obviously very, in line with your actuarial target. In the last conversation we've had over the last six months with the board, they were focused on maintaining the risk profile that they have and increasing the expected return on the margin. And that was kind of the driver of the discussion. And we also had a good, healthy discussion about the fees that we're paying in different categories and whether we're paying higher fees for higher return versus paying higher fees for risk mitigation, for example, in the hedge fund category. And one of the fallouts of that discussion was the board did recently vote to reduce the hedge fund allocation from the target you see here, 8% to 5%. Importantly, before I leave this page, this projections and the numbers I'm going to go through in a second do not include any assumption for active management premiums. So, these are designed to be the performance of the passive beta benchmark, if you will. You know, in the case of private equity, there's, we would characterize the higher return we expect there as being a conservative number that is really just assigned to the idea of being in a liquidity premium. So, when you lock up your capital, do you expect to earn more from just from that illiquidity that you're taking on? So, I'm going to jump into the asset class assumptions, which start on page seven. And so, the challenging part, I think, as Gene mentioned, about deciding where to put and invest your money is that you can always look in the rearview mirror and look at what's happened in the recent past or even in the long-term, you know, long-term time periods. But you're endeavoring to make a forward-looking decision. And so, what does that mean? That means that we don't know what the future is going to hold. We can examine what the past has delivered, both in terms of risk and return. And we can talk about the fees and other things that are associated with implementing any strategy. But we don't know what the future holds. And so, we go through a process internally in NEPC. And I guess, one of the things you hire us for is that process of developing assumptions about the future. And, you know, we think the primary drivers of your return of your whole investment program are going to be that discussion about where to allocate your assets, that policy decision. And then, the implementation decisions of hiring passive or active managers is another part of that. But, so I'll go ahead and jump into page eight, which has our assumptions, forward-looking, for each of the asset categories that we have in the portfolio. We actually do have two sets of return expectations. We focus on the 30-year because it really ties into your actuarial time horizon. And you can see here, you know, for example, the page I went through with performance, when an asset category like the S&amp;P has done very well, say, in a five- or seven-year period where it's up 10%, 12%, 13% returns, that usually generally means that, on a forward-looking basis, we're looking at the valuation, and we're likely to be reducing our forward-looking assumption for return because the market has become rich and potentially overpriced in terms of relative to its history or, you know, relative to other markets. So, looking at this page here, we've got both the return and the risk assumption for each category. I've shaded in blue and green and purple the returns for most of the equity categories. If you think of the 7.25% actuarial target as your kind of midpoint in what, you know, what you're trying to achieve for a balanced portfolio, you've got to have asset classes that return higher than that, balanced with kind of risk mitigators that are generally going to give you a lower return, like bonds. I don't know if there's any questions on this page or not, but I'll, you know, there's several other pages that kind of talk about the cyclicality of some of these returns, in particular, the US equity market versus the non-US equity market, emerging markets and how they've developed, and why we expect a higher return from those markets. I'm not going to go through all those pages. And what I would like to do, if I could, is-
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Just to give a better sense of where we are, I am hoping that all the presentations be done by quarter after three o'clock so that we can have about an hour for Q&amp;A and discussion. And that presentation includes, you know, presenting the ERFC options as well.
Sure.
Okay.
Then I'll just wrap it up.
And then, for the board members, I know you have a question. So, I have a board member on my list. Continue raising your hand. I'm going to put down your names. And if you could hold up your question on tear after the presentations are first done with, I'd appreciate it. Sure.
My process question is that I understand that the board asked for this analysis, but I'm a little worried that we are really deep in data. And I was kind of hoping for, honestly, a five-minute executive summary that says, 33 pages of PowerPoint, here's what we believe reflects, you know, the performance here of the ERFC's investments. I mean, this is, I'm really worried. We've got 12 board members trying to make a serious decision. We've got to have a work session discussion. And I don't even think we can afford another 30 minutes of this, is what I'm worried about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosley, if you could continue.
Sure, I mean, in the interest of time, you know, again, we put this together to try to be responsive to all the questions that we've gotten. So, I'm happy to kind of-
The data is important. The data is important, but I'm just suggesting that when you go to the summary, executive summary of what this all tells us, not the numbers themselves.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, so then, if I was to summarize, I would say that the portfolio has performed well in terms of versus peers and versus your Policy Index, that the returns over the 10 and 15 years being below your actuarial assumption are the key, one of the key things that's driving your annual contribution increases. So, the whole market, not just your plan, all public plans on a median basis earning, you know, below a 7% return over 10 and 15 years has been kind of the key outcome that I think has, you know, created that pressure on annual, the ARC, the annual required contribution. And the last point would be to say that we think the process that the board goes through on a regular, monthly, quarterly basis factors in returns, discussions about fees, active versus passive management, and, you know, regularly evaluating the decisions they've made in the past and making changes as needed.
We were actually going to pause here for some questions, but if the board would like us to go through the rest of the presentation, we could do that as well.
Could you do the rest of the presentations?
I'm going to turn it over to our actuary consultant, Kareem Aladina here. He's going to go over just a few slides. We weren't planning on going over all the slides, but I think he has some relevant slides that says, okay, now we have all of our investment process, philosophy, and returns, how that's translating to our assets and what we need for benefit payments and how that all works with our actuarial calculations.
Thank you, Susan. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here again today and share some thoughts with you. Susan's done a good intro, so I'm not going to spend time on that. The idea here really is just to figure out, if you make decisions related to investments, how is that going to impact any contribution that you'll have to make to the plan, okay? And again, my goal here really is just to demonstrate to you how those things work together, rather than give you absolute advice in any one particular way. Yeah?
Yes, and it's a separate presentation online. So, if you're following along, it should be the Aon presentation, A-O-N presentation.
Can we go to slide four? I don't know if I can. Yeah, awesome. All right. So, I thought it might be easier just to take a look at sort of what the big picture is in terms of pension cost. Because I think that when you then you look at this, it'll be a little easier to understand how the different pieces fit in, okay? So, really, the cost of a benefit program, a retirement benefit program or a pension plan really is the benefits that you promised to pay and what it's going to cost you to administer that plan. And by administration, I simply mean, what are you going to pay your actuaries, your investment consultants, your lawyer, your auditors, and so on, okay? This is not investment manager fees, right? Those are what I mean by administrative expenses, right? So, on the right-hand side, that is the true cost of your benefit program. How are you going to fund that? There are two real sources of funding related to that. One is the contributions that are made to the plan. And those could be what, you know, the company puts in or what the employees, or in this case, the teachers and others are required and asked to put in. The second is investment performance, right? So, if you have very high positive investment performance, the amount of money that you have to put in to fund those benefits goes down. If you have poor investment performance, the cost goes up. And that's exactly what Doug was trying to get at, that historically, what has happened over the past few years is that because performance has been low, contributions have been higher, okay? And if you look at it, what's happening here is that the system works simply as the contributions go in, investment returns go in, okay? In the case of contributions, the employees are putting in about 3% of pay, not about, they're putting exactly 3% of payroll. And your budgeted contribution is 6.4% of payroll, or roughly about $95 million for fiscal '18. And at the bottom, you're paying out administrative expenses and benefit payments, which are running about $165 million a year, somewhere around there, okay? Big picture, yeah? Okay. So, if we then just continue down, how does an actuarial calculation work, right? Basically, the calculation starts by determining what is the promise that you have made. So, ultimately, you have a group of people that are working for you that are in this plan, okay? You've promised them a certain set of benefits. If they stay with you till retirement or when they leave, what will be that benefit? And what is the value today of that obligation? Because that's upon which the contribution will be based. And it has many different factors that impact that. Who are the participant groups? What are the benefits? On the right-hand side, sort of the economic and demographic assumptions. How long are people going to live? When are they going to terminate? What is the interest rate is the biggest driver? What is the interest rate that you use to value that liability today is the most important factor because it'll have the greatest impact on your cost, okay? The only other comment I would make on this slide is that sometimes there's a tendency to compare one's funded status of the pension plan. This is the ratio of the assets to the liabilities. And you sometimes look at multiple different jurisdictions or plans across the board. You have to be a little careful just to analyze what are the underlying assumptions that have been used to determine that funded status. Otherwise, you might be doing an apples-to-oranges comparison, okay? So, that's the only caveat and value from this slide. All right. So, let's take a look at what happens when you determine what the obligation is. On the bottom of this page, for the ERFC plan, as of the last formal evaluation that was done, which is December 31, 2015, you had an obligation of almost about $3.6 billion. That's for all the participants, those that are actively employed today, those that are retired, those who have left the system and will come back to collect a benefit in the future. Okay, $3.6 billion. And if I take a look at that, you sort of bifurcate that liability into two pieces. What is it for service that's already been rendered? And what is it for service that will be rendered in the future by those that are still working here today, okay? And if you look at that, the actual accrued liability is the component for service that's already been rendered, and that's the majority of your obligation. It's $2,881 million, okay? The remaining amount of $683 million is for future, right? It's an important piece because if you decide to modify the plan for existing employees for the future, you're really just working with that $683 million piece. You're not working with the $2.881 billion piece unless you actually go and make historical changes, which is a different thing altogether, yeah? All right. The next slide. So, what is the contribution and how do I determine, right? Because this is a plan in which you are putting in money into a trust, you have assets. So, we go back and we say, of the $2,881 million that I had for services that have been already rendered, how much of that is already funded? In other words, how much, what do I have in my bank to cover those? And what you have is $2,188 million, okay? So, what that means is that for the services that have already been rendered, you are short $693 million. Now, you have to pay that off over a period of time because those benefits are going to come to you, and you're going to have to pay it. And the decision that has been made to fund that is over a 30-year period. Closed group, started in 2010. So, if all the assumptions work out exactly right, by 2040, you'll have paid it off. And so, there's 23 years left. And every year, you pay a little sliver of that, okay? So, that is, on the right-hand side, where it says the amortization of the unfunded accrued liability, U-A-A-L, that is a sliver that you're paying in that year, all right? Now, we talked about the fact that you also have service that will be rendered, and people will be accruing that benefit. So, you want to be able to cover the cost of that as well as it accrues. That's called the normal cost. So, in other words, the contribution that you have to make is the sum of the normal costs, benefits that are going to accrue, plus the amortization of the liability that you have that you haven't yet funded, okay? All right. So, if we look at the next slide, then, let's take a look at the sensitivity of the numbers, right? So, if you stay with me on the left-hand column, under the current asset allocation, you're not making any changes in investment performance, okay? You have an actual accrued liability of $2,881 million. You have assets of $2,188 million. Sorry, the numbers, I didn't make them up. They just are the same numbers that just sort of move around. Seems a little bit coincidental. You have an unfunded liability of $693 million. And if I add both pieces together, meaning the benefits that are accruing plus the amortization, that's how you come up with a 6.4%. That's how your actuary has determined that if you pay 6.4% of your payroll, you'll cover the cost of benefits that are accruing now plus paying off that liability. Compared to your payroll, your budget for 2018 is $95 million. So, that's your contribution, okay? If you understand that base piece and you stay with me and we look on the right-hand side and we say, what happens if all of a sudden my asset value goes up by $10 million? I have a higher return. I spend a little less. Something happens and my asset value goes up by $10 million. Does that mean that I have $10 million less to contribute to the plan? Not right away. That's the answer. Ultimately, you may, if that continues. But immediately, you do not. Because as I said before, if you just gain $10 million, your unfunded liability will now be $683 million instead of $693, right? Because your assets went up by 10. But the way the amortization works and the way the contributions work, you only see $700,000 reduction in your contribution, okay? So, there is a sensitivity to that that you have to keep in mind. Now, if that $10 million is achieved by, let's say, changing your asset allocation and reducing your investment fees hypothetically, right? If you do it that way, what you have to keep in mind is that you have to earn the same gross return. What Doug talked about is that I'm getting 7.25% net of my investments. What Doug talked about is that I'm getting 7.25% net of my investments. So let's just say, for argument's sake, that means before, if I include the investment expenses I'm paying, I'm earning 7.8%. I pay out my investment expenses, I get a net return of 7.25%. So the only way to generate this jump in the assets is I still have to earn a gross return of 7.8%. And then, right, I pay less in fees. And that's how I generate that leverage. So you have to keep that in mind. So we took a look, and Doug, and please chime in. When you looked at it, I think the new passive portfolio that's being recommended, I believe, has a expected forward-looking return of only 6.47%. Correct? Okay? So not 7.25%, 6.47% net. That is, if you move to the suggested passive asset allocation strategy of the 60%, yeah, completely passive, right? Your forward-looking expected return is 6.47%. Okay, so you're going to earn a lot less. Now, go back to the big picture that I talked about. If you earn less, your liabilities don't change. That just means that the contributions that you have to make then go up, because you have to make up that shortfall, either through contributions or through investment return. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't do this. I'm just saying, just keep that in mind about how the equation works. Okay? But, and I know that you're not going to immediately change your rate of return, because you take a look at all of your assumptions, I believe it's every other year, Gene? Every five years. Experience, even on the investment return, is five years. Okay? So at some point in the future, if you change your asset allocation, you'll have to look at what should be our return assumption. You can't just continue to use 7.25% if you change your asset allocation, because it's forward-looking and what can you really expect? What we did, what I did was just a really simplified back-of-the-oval calculation to say, if you were using 6.47% instead of 7.25%, what would it do to your liability? Right? And I don't know how sensitive your liability is to changes in interest rates, so I've done a sort of a guess at it a little bit, an educated guess. And you see that the liability in that line that says actual accrued liability under the 6.47 column would go up by anywhere from $250 to $325 million. If that happens, correspondingly, your contribution goes up by anywhere from about $17 to $22 million a year. Right? Because your liability jumps up, less returns, more money have to go in. Yeah? Again, this is not intended, I just repeat myself, to indicate one way or the other to you about what you should do with your investment policy. You should just be aware that if you change investment policy, it does have implications long-term on how you measure your obligations and the way your contributions work out. Okay? So sometimes, you know, plan sponsors will have, try to get a higher return, because they're trying to balance how much money they have to put in with how much they can earn through investment performance while keeping the risk factors in mind as well. Okay? All right. And if I keep going, only the last slide I will show you is... Let me scroll down. Right? So, you know, I presented here to you two key risk factors that I think you should keep in mind. The interest rate, we've already talked about. The other is mortality or more related to longevity. Because as we all know, through medical advancement and healthy lifestyles and so on, longevity's going up, or longer. We're living longer, which is great. But it has a corresponding negative impact on pension obligations, right? Because it means that you're just going to be paid a benefit for a longer period of time. Now, what I will tell you, though, is that in the ERFC, you know, there was a study that was done by the Society of Actuaries that came out in 2014, which reflected these significant increases in longevity. Okay? That was for private sector plans. The Society of Actuaries is undergoing a study for public sector plans. It's not done yet. But the ERFC adopted that, the table that was released, and the future longevity improvement scales from 2014. So you've actually already factored in a lot of this longevity improvements into your obligations today. Okay? So that's a good thing. That's a very good thing. And the reason why it's also a very good thing is because in 2015, and again in 2016, the Society of Actuaries came up with changes in longevity, because they felt that they were overly conservative initially. So they've backed away on some of those, and they have led to plan sponsors who are using the more current 2016 scales, a reduction in the liabilities. So you could see about a 1% or 2% reduction in the liability. So you are all in, probably a little bit conservative, based on private sector studies, okay? Just as the caveat, there's a public sector study coming up. Okay? So just to keep in mind. Okay?
Okay, and I think I have the last slide, which is to provide your information on what the cost savings would be if we changed the plan benefits to Rule of 90, which is the very last slide, or it is posted separately as well. So I'm going to be talking about the red pipe that's out of that picture. We talked about the investment returns. We talked about the employer contribution. We have a small administrative expenses. Now we're talking about the benefit payments. So depending on how each of those facets turn on and off, it's going to trigger your employer contributions. So the board had requested, it was part of the follow-on motion for the February 9 advertised budget, what would be the impact if we went ahead and changed the benefit plans to Rule of 90, meaning age plus service equals 90? And that is the last two columns. And this format should look very similar to the board. It's the same format we've been using the last couple of presentations. And these include four changes. We were going to reduce the interest crediting rate from 5% to 4%. We were also going to change the final average salary from 3% to 5%. And then we're going to change the COLA from 3% fixed to 100% of CPI capped at 4%. Okay, so if you go to the last two columns, if you were only to impact the new hires, that would be a savings of $2.3 million immediately, the first-year savings that would be next year. And then the short-term savings will be $6.3 million, and then the long-term savings of $16.1 million. And then you had also requested what the savings would be if it impacted our non-vested employees, which would include more than 8,000 of our current employees. And as you could see, the savings to the very last column. The difference between the new hires and new hires and non-vested is really how long it would take us to get to the short-term savings and the long-term savings. So if you were only impacting new hires, the short-term savings would be, I have to now look at my notes, 5 to 7 years. It would take us 5 to 7 years to achieve the $6.3 million savings, but only 3 to 6 years to achieve $9.5 million in savings. And then, again, for long-term projected savings, it's the timing. For just the new hires, it would take 10-plus years to reach $16.1 million, and then the same amount at 6-plus years. So this is the information the board had requested back in February. So based on all that you've heard today regarding our investment philosophy, our returns, and how some of the assumptions change our required contributions from the actuary, now you have the benefit side. So really, now we need the direction from the board about where there's consensus going forward for July 2018, if the board wish to make any changes to the ERFC plan.
Thank you for the presentations. I have several board members on my list. Just want to remind board members once again, we have a motion on the table to be voted on on this Thursday night, which is the same motion postponed from February 9. And that motion happens to be the second column, where you see minimum age to 55 with the groups in A and B, which are new hires and non-vested, with a first-year projected savings of $4.7 million. That is what's on the table. I mean, I'm not necessarily seeking, you know, any consensus on any other option today, but one I would love to have a, you know, welcome the discussion. But if anybody has any amendment to propose, let your colleagues know as soon as possible so that board members could leave a further consideration. Also, public could have commented on Thursday night. And also, since we are limited by 10 speakers on Thursday night, public could send in, you know, their, you know, written input to us. With that, I have Mr. Scherz to be followed by Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Perchek, and Ms. Huff. Mr. Scherz.
Yeah, I'm confused on a couple of things. Can we go to the Aon presentation? Page seven, I think. So this, or the successive table. So this is showing $693 million as the liability, but can you go down to the next table that shows, the next page? So unfunded actuarial accrued liability, that's from 2015. But isn't this 810 now?
So you're actually projected it forward to come up with the contributions? And it was in the 700, and I think it was 13 million or something like that. Do you know the exact? Oh, you're talking about the GASB evaluation? Sorry, Gene, go ahead, you want to?
There's a difference in the unfunded liability that's used for funding purposes that the actuary calculates and what is required under GASB. So if you're quoting an $810 million number, that was the number that was reported in our financial report. So unfortunately, GASB standards are different than actuarial funding standards. And so there's two different measurements of the liability.
But why are we using an asset allocation that's, you know, 16 months old at this point? There's nothing...
An actuarial valuation? We do our actuarial valuations on a calendar year basis. We have given all the data for 2016 to the actuary. They are actually holding up our actuarial valuation until you make a decision. We can't complete the actuarial valuation unless we know if there's going to be benefit changes. But we got all the data to them on February 6 for the 2016 calendar year. They are all ready to go pending what you decide on Thursday night.
But, okay, so, but it's not $693 million. It's substantially more than that at this point.
We can't, we don't know what the numbers are. Our return for 2016 was fairly close to the actuarial earnings assumption, if our demographic changes are fairly close.
Well, the other problem I have here, and has been a problem, and we've had it as a part of our presentations heretofore, is the 7.25. And you said, I mean, I wrote it down, you said, with 7.2 as the midpoint goal of the board, midpoint. I mean, 7.25 as a midpoint would be a stretch of a definition. I mean, what's the 10-year, what's the 10-year on the 7.25 in actuality?
I think Doug actually covered some of that, those returns?
Yeah, so the 10-year return, I'm sorry. The 10-year return that you've achieved is below 5% right now, as of February.
Well, that's kind of the point, is we keep using this as an expected return number, and you're saying that it's the midpoint goal of the board, and the 10-year is below 5%. So I feel like this presentation is like an alternate reality in that it's, we're not, I mean, 7.25 is a lofty goal at this point.
So, do you want to comment? You want to add?
You can jump in.
So first of all, from a midpoint, if I use the word midpoint, I meant it's a forward-looking expectation, okay? So that's your outlook?
But based on what? Because we don't have a historical basis from which to derive that as a reasonable expectation going forward.
All fair points. I will make a couple of comments and then maybe turn it over to Doug, who has more experience in this. I would simply say that, first of all, you choose a rate of return or interest rate based on what the outlook is on the assets, on how your assets are invested. So you do look forward on how it's expected. The reason of not using just historical returns is because sometimes events have occurred that sway that return. So in the 10-year period, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying in terms of what the return has been, but there have been events that have occurred that have caused that layer to be lower. So if you go longer period or shorter period, it might be different. But I believe that if you sort of look at the asset allocation as it is today, that it's a, is it fair to say it's a reasonable expectation? Or I should let you comment on that?
Yeah, yeah. So we believe it's a reasonable expectation over the long term. And over the trailing seven years, the board has achieved 7.7. And then when you go back to the 15-year return, it's just under 7, and that includes two market corrections. So looking over longer cycles, as Gene mentioned, prior to the first market correction, '01 and '02, you had a period of, you know, 10 years of very strong return. So when you go out and look at a 20-year number now, that's going to be higher than the 7.25%. And the board has just recently lowered that expectation from 7.5. So the board looks at it every year. They look at the market expectations, interest rate, interest rate levels, and our recommendations, and they adjust it accordingly over time.
But if we have a 10-year, you know, under 5, and it's like 4, it's 4-something, to project, I mean, when you say that this is a long-term reasonable expectation, expected return over what? Over what period of time are you thinking we're going to recover from 4, 8, or whatever it is, to 7.2? I mean, that is a dramatic recovery on an expected return that would have to make up for. I mean, how long have we been at 7.5 or 7.25 and not achieving that?
It depends on the time period. So as I've said, in terms of recovering, you already have achieved a 7.7% return over the trailing seven years. So you've had a subsequent period where you've outperformed that actuarial target. It's just looking at it, again, very endpoint sensitive, whether we're looking at December numbers, or March, or February, whether we want to look at 10, 15, 20 years, we don't think there's one magic number to look at. And the reason, you know, that I tried to talk about the forward-looking assumption is the current level of interest rates matters, right? And that's, again, looking forward. What do we expect from bonds? And then, you know, what's the relationship between bonds and stocks?
So I get, I mean, I'm not looking for a magic number. I mean, this is not a, you know, rainbow unicorn pony, you know, discussion. This is, this is money and people's retirement. And I feel like we're, we sort of haven't actually aligned expectations potentially with what's been transpiring to date, and then what the possible alternate choices, as Mr. Moon's saying, you know, look, we have to decide whether or not we're, you know, what our decision is going forward. And if we're going to make a decision based on something that, looking in the rearview mirror, you know, knowing where we're going is based on knowing where we've been, we're not achieving 7.25. And I'm still very concerned about the 693. Because for you to say at this point, you don't have the numbers for the last 16 months, I mean, that's another year's worth of financial information. I mean, how many times have we come back to this table looking for insight as a board? And we're now, I mean, and just because you're not required to do what GASB does, you know, if you're at $800 million or more, why not report on that? Why report on statistics of, you know, an asset pool that's, you know, 16 months old at this point? Because I don't think that that represents the true liability that this board has, the true long-term liability that this board has.
Just to reiterate, we do have the numbers. As of 12/31, we forwarded those all to the actuary. We just can't complete the valuation, because we don't have your decision. So we can't give you a liability figure as of 12/31/2016 unless we know what the benefit structure is. The GASB numbers, what they do is reflect a more immediate market conditions, whereas the actuary values phases those in over a five-year period, so you aren't subject to such fluctuations in your employer contribution rate. What we don't want to have is an unexpected increase. So we amortize those over a five-year period. I mean, you can concentrate on the 10-year number. We had the '08, '09 during that period, the most significant financial crisis in the last 100 years. So 15 years, we're at 6.7; 20 years, we're over 8%. So we're looking at the long term, we're looking at 30-year return assumption of 7.25%. We have to justify that rate to our auditor. We have to explain that rate. It's, you know, it's in conjunction with the investment consultant, the actuary, and the auditor where we set that earnings assumption. Our earnings assumption is not out of line. In fact, it's below the median public plan in the country. And I would say the average is around 7.5%.
But then what's the performance, then? What, I mean, you know what?
The performance over seven years net has been 7.7%. Over 10 years, net has been 4.8. Most public pension plans across the country have been in that 5% range.
Okay, but why do you stop at seven years? See, it seems as if, as if depending on the...
No, I'm not.
But you say seven years net...
Seven, 10, 15, and 20.
Okay, well, what is that same performance net fees over 10 years?
4.8.
4.8.
And over 15 is 6.7. And over 20 is over 8.
Okay, I have Mrs. Strauss next, to be followed by Ms. Perchek.
Okay, first of all, just reiterating where we were when we delayed the vote on this. I continue to support adjustments to the plan, acknowledging other changes in financial projections, age of retirees, sort of the reality of where we are. So I do support making some adjustments. I've listened to my colleagues. When we last left off, I was supporting in the, it would be in the first-year savings of the... of the 4.7 million, making the recommended adjustments in the plan with a minimum age of 55, 30 years of service or age 60 with five years. Okay, now, my questions are, tell me again the VRS rules, and that would be from Ms. Quinn. In other words, we know that our average retirement age for our employees is 62. And the last time we made major changes to this plan, I think it was in 2000, 2001, 2002.
2001.
Right. And VRS has changed the benefit structure for theirs. And obviously, social security has made changes over time. So at what age would one of our employees be able to retire and be able to access the combination of VRS, ERFC and social security? Just remind me again.
So the current rule for VRS is Rule of 90. So if our employees, if, let's say for an example, you had an employee start at age 22, they would be age 56 with 34 years of service. They would qualify for VRS, Rule of 90. If you started at age 25, your eligibility age would be like 57.5 with 32.5 years of service. If you started at age 35, you would be 62.5 with 27.5 years of service. And this was part of the presentation in January, and it was Slide 4, January's presentation. And then for social security, our employees would be, whatever the full social security age would be, 67 for all the new employees or the non-vested.
All the new hires.
All the new hires, it would be at 67.
So technically, for somebody to retire to be able to collect full payout from all three plans, they're 67.
No, they could collect VRS and ERFC.
Right, but not social security.
But not social security.
Right. And so, but we currently average retirement age is 62. So our, so that would assume that those are people who are collecting ERFC and VRS, but not social security.
Correct.
So they are electing, okay, while I listen to my colleagues, I do continue to support making changes in the calculation. I think it's appropriate. I absolutely support keeping ERFC as a benefit for our employees. And we have fiduciary responsibility to make sure that it's done responsibly. So I do support making some adjustments. I need to listen to my colleagues. I still stand with the column that I support where I did last January, February. Thank you.
Ms. Perchek.
Thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. And to be clear, because I think I've had some conversations with some of the members of the Board of Trustees. This is, I think, the reason, at least personally, that we asked for this information and to hold on the vote is not being an expert in this area. I do feel that, you know, as a new board member, I did want to do my research and try to get up to date and have a little crash course with some investment bankers before we make decisions that will impact our employees. So I really appreciate, I know it's a lot of time and effort that's got into this. And just to know that it really is, I think, in the end, we are responsible for our employees and our retired employees. So having said that, I have a couple of questions about the presentation. And please bear with me as a novice at this. The first one is when we talk about the 6.7% up there, that I assume that's, is that based on our current portfolio? If nothing changed of our portfolio, is that what that would be? No.
No, so that's the 7.25% is if you did no investment changes.
I understand, but I guess 6.4%, what is that based on? What would we change to? Because it's kind of an assumption.
It's an entirely passive portfolio of 60% equities, 40% fixed income. You want to talk about the allocation?
Right, but which portfolio? This is like an invented portfolio or is there, are we looking at specific passive portfolio there?
No, it was in response to a question, I believe, from the school board about what it would look like to have, to shift the portfolio from the current portfolio to this more basic, simple portfolio and eliminate presumably alternative asset classes that are more expensive from a management fee standpoint.
I understand, but I guess my assumption is that not every passive portfolio is identical or are we saying they're pretty much identical?
So we, go ahead.
No, they would not be identical. We assumed you wanted to look at passive alternatives, so we had to assume some allocation. So we said 60% in the S&amp;P 500 index and 40% in a bond index. So that was used to illustrate 100% passive portfolio. You can't get some of the asset classes in index form. You can't get direct real estate. You can't get some of the other asset classes, private equity that we use. So we just use this for illustration purposes, a 60/40 portfolio.
And as a layperson, could you explain why those were the assumptions that were made if we were to make that change?
It's a fairly common portfolio, 60/40.
It's a long-dated, traditional blend of equities and fixed income to demonstrate exactly what it's designed to do here. To show a conservative, large-cap predominantly, large-cap equity weighting to give you the historical equity returns that come out of that asset class, right? Which tend to be 8, 9, 10% over an extended period of time. Fixed income typically much less. But I would also point out that this particular blend, I think Jean makes an excellent point. There's no way to replicate what we've done from an allocation standpoint with completely indexing. We're not against it, by the way. I mean, you all should know that the board is completely agnostic in terms of how the capital is deployed. And we spend a lot, we spend a lot of time trying to make the right risk decision on a go-forward basis. But in this interest rate environment with equities in terms of valuation where they are, which is historically very high, and actually, that's been propelled by the flow of money into passive investments. This, in the judgment of many, would be a very ill-timed maneuver.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I'm wondering, going through this, and maybe we don't have access to this, is it possible to look at more specifics on what our portfolio? I think you mentioned some of the fees. All I see is net of, but what the specifics are? Was it here somewhere that I didn't notice or I'd like to have access to it if it's not?
Now, we are paying about 60 basis points, I'm sorry, 0.6% of fees on our entire portfolio. And we do have to break down by asset class if you would like to see that. Certainly, categories like direct real estate are more in the 1% category. Whereas what we have in the index fees are very inexpensive. Two basis points for, so they range all the way from two basis points up to the, you know, private equity, which is more expensive, more in the 2% range.
So is it feasible task for that as the next step for those fees? Are they?
The fees that we pay broken down by asset class, certainly. And they're fully disclosed in our annual report where we pay to each of our investment managers.
Okay.
So you could get those numbers for June 30 out of our financial report.
Thank you. And another layperson question, but also just for anyone who's watching. I assume a lot of the comparison and what I heard is with other public funds? Is it, or is it a mix of public and private funds that we're comparing with?
We can do both, but we typically focus on comparison to other public funds with the board, with the ERFC board.
Could you explain just the reasoning behind that?
Well, so depending on the goals and objectives of different types of investors, endowment funds tend to invest their money more heavily in alternative assets. And they have, while they don't have a liability structure that is similar to yours, they do, you know, take a certain amount of, you know, annual income out of the fund to subsidize whatever their activities are. So their, their structure is typically a little different. And then corporate pension funds are one of the other big comparison points. And they, they have a different structure in that they are using a discount rate that is more market-driven. And that causes them, in some instances, not completely, to hedge their interest rate risk differently. Meaning that they put, they try to use a lot more duration exposure that tries to match their, more closely their liabilities. And so their, their returns tend to be a little bit more volatile when rates are moving up or down. And so that causes some kind of odd comparisons. When rates have been falling, a corporate pension fund that has, that does hedge liabilities to a great extent would do better. When rates are rising, they're going to do more poorly from an asset return standpoint. And the reason they're doing that is because they're looking at how their liabilities move up and down with interest rates as well. So they're, they're incented through FASB and other requirements, including the fact that it hits their earnings year to year, to kind of try to mitigate that deviation between their assets and their liabilities moving around and try to get them moving in tandem.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I guess my final question, I don't know if you're able to answer this, but as our specialist right now, is we're saying the recommendation is that right now may not be the time to move toward passive investment. Just been trying to do some research and it looks like some plans, the New York 529 Plan has, I believe, gone to all passive through Vanguard. I think Harvard just totally revamped their, their management system. And they had different challenges, obviously. But do you have a sense of where other similar systems are making these decisions and why some may be saying, no, really, passive management is a good idea right now? While maybe others are like us are saying perhaps not?
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. It's, this debate has been going on for 25 years in the investment community. And I think where the approach that this board has taken is to look at it by asset class and try to make a determination, where are we paying more in fees and not getting what we're looking for? So to be clear, when I say that this board is agnostic, when you're looking at things on a risk-adjusted basis and you're looking to properly diversify, there are some asset classes that lend themselves to indexing if that's the route you want to go. And I think we're approximately a third, if I have, if I have a third in equities, excuse me. So the trend of late in the last several years has been to move more into passive. And quite frankly, as we've said several times today, if you look into the rearview mirror, it looks like that was a good idea. The more money that flows into the same things, the higher those prices go. That's just an economic reality of how this whole industry operates. You would have to go back to recession in '72, '73 and see the cataclysmic impact of a lot of capital running into certain equities or certain types of investing. It was called the Nifty 50 and it was a complete disaster. Obviously, you can look at the internet period of time, which Doug's highlighted, some of the points along the way that suggest if you were taking the populist view, you know, what in fact were the ramifications? The debate that's going on now and the conversation that we have at the board level isn't around whether it should be passive or active. It's just in terms of valuation. Are the, has the amount of money that's flown into passive investing in the last several years created the performance gap that then at this moment in time you'd be buying into? Historically, in most asset classes, active managers protect better on the downside. So if you believe that the equity markets, both in the U.S. and around the world, are going to continue on the tear from Brexit to the U.S. presidential election to what happened in France over the weekend, if you just think that the sky's the limit, then from a valuation point of view, you could technically look the other way and say, this is a way to save some money. But I think the bigger discussion is what element of risk are you adding in by doing that? Similarly, if you look at what's going on in the fixed income world, if you think rates are going to stay the same or perhaps even find a way to go lower, then you would want to take advantage of indexing in fixed income wherever you could. It's just, it's just in the limited wisdom of this board working with one of the largest consultant organizations in the world. It's just not where we think things are going to go. And we're concerned about taking incremental risk in an effort to save money. But again, the passive discussion is fine if the timing element is right.
So just to clarify, so your analysis is that the historical, long-term historical context, active management of this style that we have, appropriate, does outperform passive management of equities?
The point I'm trying to make is that if you eliminate the human element from all analysis, then you're just going to get whatever the passive index is going to give you. And if you, for example, wanted to buy an index, I mean, if you look down Doug's list and you look at the comparative indexes of Russell 1000, Russell 3000, these are 3,000 different companies. If you think, if you think this is the time where they're all going to go up, then passive makes a lot of sense. If you instead choose to balance your approach and deploy the capital with investment managers who, over a cycle, have done a better job protecting the corpus, then that's where the active management comes in. And that's the debate. I don't, I don't know the answer. But the, when you get into 4.8 versus 7.7, really what you're doing is looking at a longer period of time, right? And that's, and that's the challenge here. Over the long run, can we get a balanced return to match the needs of the plan with appropriate diversification, both active and passive? And the position we've taken is yes, we can.
Okay, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I have one more question for Ms. Quinn and then I will give where I'm standing right now. When we're looking at our possible shifts in the ERFC, I know we've had this conversation before, but if you could enlighten me, is it looking at the changes, whether it's Group A or Group A and B? Or I guess specifically for Group A, are we able to see for only changing minimum age to 55 and the interest crediting rate? Or is that something we'd have to go back and study if we were only to make those two adjustments?
We would have to go back and recalculate. Because when we calculated all these different options, we incorporated all four changes into those savings. So is that correct? Yep.
And, but it would be feasible for this coming fiscal year or it's too late for that?
Anything is feasible at a cost. So I think what you're asking is for us to calculate it just based on increasing the minimum age and the interest crediting rate? Is that what I heard you say?
So this is something in external cost we'd have.
So, yes, it's an external cost. I do know that the interest crediting rate, 1% was only valued at, I believe, $250,000. So the bulk of the savings, I don't know exactly how much of the savings.
Sorry, that's in the long term?
Majority of the savings was changing the COLA option. So if we pull the COLA option off the table, then the savings, I believe, would be very minimal.
Very minimal, even in the long term. Okay. Well, for my guidance right now, I do not support changes of these to Group B. I would be open to Group A for the first category. But I would also like us to consider the possibility of maybe that the quarter or half percent employee contribution increase. So I don't know where my colleagues stand on that, but I would like us to have that conversation as well for Thursday. If that's when it has to happen.
Okay, and hopefully with the quarter and a half percent additional employee contribution rate, if you could give us a, you know, number for?
Sure, and I'm understanding that to be for all current employees. So everyone would pay a quarter percent higher.
So how much would that be?
Right, I think, yeah, we could get you that information.
A quarter and a half percent, both, quarter and a half percent?
Oh, quarter and half a percent. Half percent was answered as part of a question.
So quarter would be just half of that?
Half of that. I just can't remember the amount.
I believe it was 7.4 million for a half, is that correct?
Okay, so it would be about 3.7.
Okay, thank you. With that in mind, give your time check. We have about half an hour left to complete the Q and A and discussion on this. And we'll go to the next steps after that. I have Ms. Hope to be followed by Karen Cora-Sanders, Mrs. McLachlan, Mr. McElvin and Mr. Wilson. And you are on the go-back list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for this information. I'm going to try and separate my questions by, first, I guess there's sort of this conversation we're having about the actual management of the fund. And then this conversation that we're having about, as a board, our policy for the benefits that the fund offers. So I know that you mentioned the fiscal year versus the calendar year in terms of our returns and our, how we've done. I think the thing I'm not seeing and I don't understand is, although I understand things didn't go well due to the market, what I also understand is the market existed for all of our peers. And so when I look at our peer returns and we are compared that way, then in the one-year, five-year and 10-year, we're in the bottom quartile every time. And so I don't feel like I understand what we've done differently and what we're changing based on the fact that compared to our peers, regardless of what the market did in a negative way or a positive way, we did not have objectively. a positive way, we did not have objectively a good outcome.
So I don't I'm not sure which peer groups, oh, fiscal year, okay. So I don't have the fiscal year numbers in front of me, but I would say that broadly, the answer to that question, there's really two parts of it. The first is, in the differences between you and your peers, ERFC has generally used less in alternative assets, meaning that they, where you've been building a private equity portfolio, and you have a seven and a half percent target to real estate, half of that real estate allocation is public REITs and half of it's private. Your allocation generally to private investments, which have done very well, has been lower as you've been trying to build and kind of catch up to your peers. So that's one part of it. The other big part of it, I think, is the equity allocation, both the size of it. After the financial crisis, there was a desire that I would say our firm had, and many of our clients had, to try to reduce equity portfolio risk. And so we took some of that risk off the table. And subsequently, it's been a strong period for US equity market returns. And the the big difference, I think, for a lot of our clients has been, we have more of a balance between US equities and non-US equities, meaning that there are some of our peers or some of ERFC's peers that have still have 75 or 80% of their public equities with just the S and P 500. And that has done, I think, over the trailing seven years, it's eight or 9% better each year annualized on average than the non-US equity market. And so that, we believe, is very cyclical. And so most of our clients have been willing to keep that in place because they look, and including some of the data I have in our presentation that I didn't get to go through, talks about kind of that cyclicality, where, you know, both markets are driven by their economic activity, their GDP growth, for example. And the developed non-US markets like Europe and Japan in particular have had slower growth. They've had slower, lower equity returns since the financial crisis. And emerging markets, where there has been higher growth, has had more volatility. And certainly, both of those markets, when we invest outside the US, when the dollar strengthens, it hurts those markets. The other the other area that they've invested, that we've recommended that ERFC invest in is is in inflation sensitive assets, like TIPS and commodities, because we believe there's both a link to asset prices and inflation, but also on your benefit structure has a link to inflation. So we wanted to have our clients have some exposure, say, 3% to 8% in more inflation sensitive assets of as a bucket. And those assets have generally underperformed the US equity market. And, you know, I'll just kind of add a point to Michael's point. After the financial crisis, the I think the trailing 10-year return for the S and P was actually flat, zero or negative for for several quarters. And that was a period of time when I think plan sponsors in general were looking at their portfolios, saying, wow, 10 years of zero because of two market corrections for the US equity market, that's something we need to rethink. And now, you know, it's not surprising, I think, to to those of us that have been investing for a long time, that when the S and P return over five and seven years is 12 or 13%, the the answer, the the question is, I really like, why don't we have more of that? And so that's kind of the tension, is we're in the the business of making forward looking decisions. The board is continuously evaluating their their performance versus their own goals, and then what their peers are doing, and regularly have discussions, and it's incorporated in the materials that we present every quarter, is how is the average public plan allocated? So we know that.
Okay. Well, thank you. I mean, I guess my concern is that 10 years ago, I assume that we were being forward looking to today, as were our peers, and five years ago similarly, one year ago similarly. And our forward thinking seems to be off. And I guess that doesn't give me confidence about the forward thinking going forward. And I guess I'm looking at our the ERFC's CAFR, and I'm looking at how we determine, how we determine long term and condition, the long term condition test. Are we doing well? Is our is our fund in a good position? And and one of those kind of data points that you look at are, what is the increase, what is the contribution rate and is it steady? And when I go back and look at our contribution rate, we're continuing to raise that. And we're going from 5.6% for the last couple of years, I think 6.4% now, and a projection out to 8%. So now I'm looking at our long term solvency, and that's not making me too confident. And then from a short term standpoint, how can we, how are we doing with our liabilities now and today? And 20 years ago, we were had 100% of being able to fund our retirees and those with the accrued covered by assets, we're at 64%. That column is down to 15% now. So when I look at our past performance compared to peers, our long term and our short term solvency, I just have a lot of concerns using our own ERFC documents that says to me, is there something that we need to consider differently? So to my colleagues, that's where I'm coming from. I'm not sure I know the answer. I don't think it's something we answer today, but I think it's something we need to be talking about, because these are our our employees, and we need to make sure that we are managing it the best way we can. I think we need to be really serious about discussing with the Board of Supervisors, is this a place that we can consolidate with them on how they are, how we're managing the investment functions of our pension plans? I don't know if that's an answer, but that that's sort of where I am, and and those are some of my concerns. So I'm gonna move on now to some questions about the decisions before us. One question I have about the COLA is, when this was calculated, Susan or Ms. Quinn, are we talking about capping it 4% and following inflation only for non vested and new hires? Or is that for all employees?
The capping would be just for new hires or new hires and non vested, just what's on the chart.
And now, do the Board of the Board of Supervisors have their COLA set? How? Are they at this following inflation capped at 4%?
Correct.
For all employees?
I believe so. I would have to go back and see when they made that change, but currently, it's COLA 100% of CPI or capped at 4%. Jean, do you recall?
When I was Executive Director there in 1989, it was the same.
Oh, okay, then it's been that way for a while.
For a long time.
Okay, so, okay, so, all right. And then, I understand VRS changed to that as well. Is that correct?
No, the the VRS is tied to the CPI, but it's a slightly different calculation.
Okay, but it still is following inflation.
Correct.
Okay. And when they made that change, did they make it for just new hires and non vested? Or just new hires?
They have not changed their their, they changed the COLA calculation in the hybrid plan in 2014. That was for new hires.
Just for new hires?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that is helpful. Thank you. And now to the rule of 90. What assumptions were used in calculating the savings? What what assumptions did you line those up with? Are those the same?
I miss all the others. I do think the actuaries did change the probability of the retirement because of the age.
That's correct. And they based it off the VRS hybrid plan. So the probability of retirement, when you're changing the eligibility ages, you have to change the probabilities. And so they changed those in line, partially in line with the Virginia Retirement System.
Okay. And is that assuming the seven and a quarter percent return?
Yes, all the other actuarial assumptions would remain unchanged.
Okay. And then you changed it on the average retirement. Okay. All right, I'm five in. Go back, you can come back to me.
Okay, Karen Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Really appreciate this. This is great. I'm a little frustrated with this whole thing, because I think what we've done is we've conflated the mechanics of managing a plan with the benefits we offer our per our employees. And so it it's not a clean way of making decisions. And I'm especially concerned because, you know, I appreciate the net net returns, but we do have, and I would like some input from you all as to, you know, we have 30.5 employees in the ERFC office. Is that standard for for pension management? Because I'm hearing different things. That's one question.
We actually just completed a survey by CEM, which is a firm that does benchmarking. And our cost per member was in the $120 range, whereas the the average cost per member in our peer group was over $300 per member. We were actually one of the lowest cost ranked systems in the peer universe, and we were the highest in terms of service. So there are two things that drive costs. One is how many members you have, and the second one are the transactions that you provide. And we looked favorable, and I certainly am willing to can provide that, those survey results to the school board. It was just completed as part of our strategic plan.
I think that would be helpful, because I think you had consultants who did some studies a few years ago that suggested that you should have about 26 employees.
We did have a staffing study that was done in 2009 after we implemented our new system. Now, when you're talking about the 30 and a half, they're not all in the ERFC office. We have 28 employees. So we did cut our staffing in 2009, and the only staffing addition that we've had since that time was a position that was requested by the school board to be added in the area of communications, so that our employees were better educated on their retirement benefits. But our our staffing level has remained unchanged.
And secondly, on as far as how much we're paying in fees, you're saying that it's right around the 2%. But I thought if you added the cost of administering the office plus the fees, it was closer to, it was higher than that.
2% was the fees on private equity. We are paying 12 million on investment fees. The investment, the administrative costs are about 4 million, so that's that's 16 million on $2 billion in assets.
Excellent.
And remember, our assets are lower than a typical plan that has 21,000 members, because we're just a supplemental plan. So it's it's more, it's more pertinent to measure our administrative costs on a per membership, because, you know, it's not a fair comparison to compare our administrative costs on an asset basis to, for example, Fairfax County on an asset basis, because they're a standalone system, so they have to have more assets than we have. So you have to be very careful when you're making these comparisons to make sure you're doing apples and apples.
No, I understand that, but that kind of goes to the question that Ms. Huff said about how we're managing this and whether we would have some economies by perhaps utilizing the one Fairfax approach and perhaps doing things as one Fairfax, and whether or not we need to look at this as far as ensuring that we have a consistency of the benefits across the system. And so I I think that there is room for improvements and and changes. My concern is that we're kind of nibbling away at the edges all over the place and not looking at this in a holistic manner. And so my advocacy would be that we actually put together a a group that, a task force that would look at not only the benefits that we're offering and how they are compared else to other employees in the Fairfax family. And then, secondly, whether we are, you know, I understand the per employee cost, but the bigger question is, yes, it could be a per employee cost, but it's on top of costs associated with the VRS, on top of costs associated with other things. So is there a better way to to provide top notch service at a lower cost so that we can continue to protect the benefits that we're offering to our employee base? And so at a minimum, I can tell you that I am not supportive of changing any sort of benefit to people that are currently our employees. We can look at new hires and perhaps streamlining to make it, make the two programs, two benefit programs come in line under the VRS hybrid conditions, you know, the same terms. And, you know, my next question is, you know, I looked at our equity classes, so now I'm going back, because, as I said, we're conflating. And I'm wondering if we need to have more of an investment in US equities, in line with what you said. And then I will just give you my own concern, long term, of a reliance on real estate. Fairfax County has, I think, 17% of all of our commercial real estate is vacant right now. And
Oh, is it 18 and a half?
Thank you. And that's changing over time because people are working in a different way. And so I just caution that people understand that commercial real estate, which is usually what's in the REITs, is changing dramatically. I mean, I have a daughter who hotels for work, so.
Let me just mention, we we just had a retreat last week with the board, and we had a panel of their real estate managers come in and talk about the market and where it is right now. And as a reminder, ERFC invests in both public real estate or public REITs, which have a lot of volatility associated with them, but but generally have delivered a higher return than the US equity market, and also private real estate, which has also done well.
And so just to recap, my feeling is that we should not be doing anything to change the benefits of the employees that we have on or the retirees, not that retirees are in this mix at this point, but that we've hired people, given them an expectation, and they've been willing to take a different, you know, perhaps a different salary, knowing that they have a long term pension.
I have a Mrs. McLachlin next, to be followed by Mr. McElvin and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I appreciate that some of my colleagues have touched on the fact that we're almost finding ourselves doing two things at once. And, you know, the first was whether there'd be any changes to the ERFC benefits, and then it became, what are we looking at in terms of the management of ERFC? And and they're both significantly important decisions, but I I think that in terms of what's time sensitive, you know, we may have to approach them both in a in a short term and a longer term action plan. The first question I have is, I had met with several employee stakeholders who'd reached out to me, and it's my understanding, they reached out to all the board members wanting to share the employee perspective. And I'd asked staff about a model we had done before where there was a health plan task force that Karen Garza had created, so that the employees were really engaged in, you know, this discussion of any potential changes to a benefit. In this case, it was their healthcare benefits. And I asked why this, you know, was this done for ERFC? And if not, why not? And the response I got from staff was that it wasn't done. It was viewed as sort of a different model. And so I'll send that to all of my colleagues so you can see the response. But I would say that as a board member, I've seen our our employee stakeholder groups reaching out to us and expressing concern about what's in front of us. And I think anytime a division looks at making changes for employees, the better you can have at least that employee engagement process, then it might help with shared information, shared input, and then at least a sense that that all voices were heard. And so I believe, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you touched on that, you know, maybe we need to look at a task force. And I would say that's for probably anything significant that we would want to do. And I certainly think a piece of managing the system and things like that would be a piece of it. But in terms of where I am with this right now, I asked back at our February work session, looking at looking at these, you know, potential options in front of us, which one most closely mirrors what the county government, AKA the board supervisors, offers to its employees? Like what, which one of these things looks like, if you work for the county, this is what FCERS looks like in terms of, you know, retirement requirements? So Ms. Quinn, I don't know if you or someone here can, which one is what theirs is?
Sure. Again, I think it's the information we shared in the January, you know, yes, January work session. I know, I'm gonna walk it through it, but for folks that might want to see exactly what was shared, it was Slide 4 in January's work session. We said the one that was most consistent with the county is the first column, which is age 55 with 30 years of service.
Okay.
So that was the original one that we've been discussing, and that was what was included in the superintendent's budget proposal.
Okay. And now, of course, in that first column, there's new hires, then new hires non-vested. When the county made adjustments to its FCERS, did they include non-vested, or did they just go new hires only?
They just go with new hires. And I believe they also committed to really making any changes for the new hires going forward as well.
What was that last?
If they were to make any changes, they committed to making changes only to the new hires as well.
So to simplify at least my input right now for my colleagues, I think that it's really important. We still look at the fact that if you work for the county, whether it's the schools or the county government, you serve the people of Fairfax County. And so I would be more comfortable making a change that reflects what county employees get through the board supervisors. And then, if the board supervisors and the school board determine that we need a long-range county-wide engagement conversation with all stakeholders about what we do with defined benefits versus defined contribution options, then that's then the next step that we would hopefully engage with together with the board supervisors. But I would be far more comfortable explaining to all of our employees, the retirees, the current employees, the non-vested, if we make these changes to new employees, this is no different than what our county of a million people decided to do for those who work for the county government. And I've really appreciated the loyalty and the concern that our retirees have emailed us and come out in force today to say, "Look, we care about all employees. We've got leaders from our county government side who are here, and you're all saying, 'Look, we care about all of our employees.'" But I would hope that you will look at what we're talking about here. Whether you work on the county or whether you work for the schools, you should all have fair benefits if you join the county or you join the schools coming forward in the next fiscal year. So not changing what we have promised to our current employees, whether, again, schools or county, I think is appropriate. But the changes in this column for new hires only, it is my understanding from hearing from staff that this is what we already do in our county. And I think we have to be mindful that there should be an apples-to-apples benefit for whichever side of the county government you work for. So to those of you who are watching and listening, please feel free to welcome, or to email me if you disagree with my ideology on this one. But I think that it's fair for new employees coming forward. We will be offering what the county government offers its new employees in terms of retirement benefit, and I think that that seems appropriate.
Okay, I have Mr. McElveen, to be followed by Mr. Wilson. Just giving you a time check again, I don't necessarily rush you, but we have a close meeting scheduled at 4:15. We have two lawyers waiting for us upstairs. Thank you.
And mounting legal costs, so I'll keep it quick. Susan, my question for you is, you gave us this figure before. What is the savings that can result for next year's budget if we move to passive management? Do you recall that figure? Something 10 to 12 million, right?
I believe I did not provide that figure, but if you did not have active, the active manager fees were, I believe, around $10 to $12 million for ERFC.
And today, our friend from Aon quoted a $17 million to $22 million increase in employer contribution. Can you explain how those two numbers jive?
Sure, but I'm gonna turn it over to the experts.
So actually, that number simply is the result of the fact that if you go to a fully passive strategy, you won't be able to use, or well, I shouldn't say you won't be able to, long-term, you will have to bring that interest rate down from 7 and 1/4 to 6.47. And if you did that, then the liabilities go up, because interest rates are going down. And so you'd have to come up with the additional funding to cover those deficits.
And that would be over a period of how long?
So that, what I quoted you, the number of the 17 to 20 million, 20 million, is an annual increase. The total increase in the liability was roughly about $250 million to $325 million.
Okay. I'm still confused. Maybe my colleagues can enlighten me on that.
So if you, just think about it this way, that today, you have, if you think of that chart, if you remember, we had a $683 million unfunded. That's what it was, right? The difference between your liability and your assets was $693 million. Right there, on that slide, if you look, sorry, go to the next slide, please.
The other slide?
The other slide, the one you had before. There it is, $693 million, okay? So when you, you know, that's the number, and that's the number on a funding basis that the actuary is using to do the calculation. All right? Yeah. Ignore the right-hand side of the column. Just focus on the left-hand side. It's $693 million, okay? And that is now causing you to contribute $95.3 million, okay? Which includes benefits that are accruing, but let's just simplify things. If I took that $693 million and I increased it by $250 million, you would expect a corresponding change in the $95 million, because you have to hire numbers to fund. That's that $17 million that we're talking about. Does that make sense? Yeah? Still no?
Okay, well, I think in short, I just want a figure from our staff telling us how much we would save and how much this.
Okay, so let me try this. If you look at the funding value of assets, we went from $2 billion, 188 million, to $2 billion, 198 million. That's where your savings of $10 million is coming in, right? Because your assets just went up by $10 million, because you didn't pay those fees. So your unfunded piece goes from $693 to $683. But by the time you calculate all the actuarial assumptions, your employer contributions only drop by $700,000 if everything stayed constant. But if you go to a passive portfolio, your forward-looking earnings have to drop, and we're estimating that to be 6.47. So if your earnings in the future years are gonna drop, longer it's gonna take you to cover the unfunded liability. So you have to pay more into the fund to make the fund fully funded.
Okay, I understand that, but for next steps, can we just go to the figure? Thank you.
Okay, I have Mr. Wilson.
I'm glad Mr. McElveen understood. Okay, thank you for that. I want to actually dig in on this same presentation, the Aon presentation. Can we go to Slide 7? Yeah, this slide here. So I'm looking at the small slice of the unfunded actuarially accrued liability. And I think I heard you say that that reflects the payment, if you will, to amortize the unfunded actuarially accrued liability over 30 years?
You started the, yeah, it's now 23. You started the 30-year period back on, in 2010. So that number's being amortized now over 23 years.
Okay, explain why it started in 2010.
You have the option to make a decision on how, what, at what point do you want to be fully funded? And I believe, so I don't know what the actuary engagement was, but I suspect that there was a conversation that was had, and it was felt that over 30 years, we want it to be fully funded.
Okay. And so was that an amortization that was a level payment?
Yes, it's a level payment with interest.
So does that slice, the dollar figure represented by that slice, change from year to year?
Yeah, so I should just correct my previous comment. It's a level percent of pay is what you're trying to get at, not a level dollar amount.
Yeah, okay.
So yes, it'll, as your payroll goes up, the dollar, the actual dollar amount will go up as well.
And so what, can you give me some figures to reflect what the change is in dollars of that amount, of that part of the slice there?
So when you change, so when you ask me for the diff, sorry, the, what change are you talking about?
So you said the percentage is fixed, but the dollars change from year to year. So what is the change that we're seeing, you know, kind of over time, say, five years in that portion of the?
What the percentage has been?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I can dig through your report, but I don't have that number handy off the top of my head. It's 3.2, sorry. That amortization for this time around is 3.26%. So out of the 6.4% contribution that you're making, 3.26% goes towards funding this liability.
So if I understood it correctly, that slice called unfunded actuarially accrued liability
Yep.
has increased in real dollars and the actual dollar amount over the last 10 years. Is that correct? And so what accounts for that? So that's increasing, but its share of the total, of its percentage as compared to the assets has remained constant? Is that what, is my understanding, so 76% reflects unfunded actuarially accrued liability divided by actuarial value of assets? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, the fund, 76% is the assets divided by the liabilities.
And that percentage has remained the same? So that, I think, over time, it's been, I think it changed over the last 10 years, right? Since, so since 2007, it's been about 76%? I'm looking now at the history of ERFC investment philosophy, and it shows we're at, remains at 76% from 2010 to 2014. That's what we're talking about. Would we say, this, that, and this is on, I'm sorry for my colleagues. Now I'm at the ERFC Investment Philosophy and Processes, page 6. It includes a statement that we've remained at 76% from 2010 to 2014. And I believe, if my math is correct, based on that pie chart we were just looking at, it's at 76% as of those numbers. Is, and I think those numbers are end of year 2015?
That's correct.
And so, and is it, can we expect it to be also 76% end of year 2016?
If I am not an actuary.
So this is an educated guess. Fair enough?
Sure.
Okay, so I think you're, if I understood correctly, your earnings for 2016 calendar year were about what you were expecting, 7 and 1/4, maybe slightly higher. So having said that, all else being equal, right? Your assets are going up by that, your liabilities are expected to go up by that, right? So unless you had significant changes in your employee population or you changed some assumptions, you'd be expected to be around the same place.
Okay.
I think, if I may add one point, sorry, not to dig into your time, just keep in mind that this funded status is based on smoothing investment gains and losses over a five-year period. Okay, so it's not against your, so I think what you might be, perhaps, I'm just trying to think about the question that you're asking. Perhaps you're looking at what the returns have been on the market, and if you're seeing that it's really poor return, why am I not seeing my funded status drop even more? It's because we're smoothing investment gains and losses when we do a calculation of the funded status for determining contribution amounts. Again, it's just a way to mitigate volatility. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Mm-hmm. But that percentage, I think, is a reflection of sort of health of the plan is one way to measure it, I would guess, that that percentage of unfunded accrued liability. And so one point, and maybe Ms. Huff can clarify. In your brief questioning, Ms. Huff, you mentioned that it had gone from 100% to 15%. Can you tell me what you were referring to?
Not 100% to 15, it was 64%. So on page 68 of the ERFC CAFER, there's a short-term solvency test explained, and it requires looking at three categories of assets, cash investments. And you're comparing for active members that are currently contributing. You're comparing for liabilities for future benefits to people already retired. And then the third category is for services already rendered by active members of ERFC. So in that third column, we, back 20 years ago, were able to fund that at the time at 64%, pay that out at 64% with our current assets. That, those current assets now are being reported in the CAFER at what we could pay out 15%. And it's gone from 64 to, in the good old days, 112% at one point, and has steadily decreased from 2007.
And maybe you could just explain why, why would, so if the end of 2015 number on that same page is 15%, what is that reflecting that's different from this 76% figure that's on page 7?
76, that's a completely different calculation. That's our funded ratio.
Okay. Then maybe, can you just explain what that last column on page 68, this 15%, it's called "portion of accrued liabilities covered by assets"?
So what's being done there simply is, they're just taking the asset values and prioritizing how they're going to be used. So what they're saying is that priority number one is my retirees. So I take my assets, I subtract out the obligations I owe to the retirees first. That's funded at 100%, okay? Then I go on, next category is, you know, sorry, member contributions is my first category. I apologize. The second category is my retirees and beneficiaries. And then the leftover money is what's gonna cover everybody else. So yes, it is 15%. And I think that, you just keep in mind that your population has grown. So you're absolutely right in some of the commentary you made in terms of like the funded status or what the performance has been has changed, but also the number of, possibly the number of participants has gone up. Different things have changed over time, yeah? But it just means that if you take, if I bifurcate my assets into pieces, that's the 15% was left over for the current actives.
Okay, and do you think that figure is also a reflection of the health of the plan?
I think I would probably be looking more at the aggregate number of the 76%, perhaps rather than the bifurcated values, is the way I would look at it. And that's why I think when there was a comment made earlier about the fact that if you look at sort of public surveys about public plans and where they stand, you're not out of line in terms of your 76%, simply because some of the things that have happened over time with the investment performance.
Well, I guess since you asked me, Mr. Wilson, I do want to say, though, although I appreciate what you're saying, this is a defined test of the short-term solvency. So regardless of the market, that's in our own ERFC CAFER of how you look at short-term. So I think that is important to note.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, and I guess, I mean, getting to our decision this Thursday, I think I've been consistent in my sentiment that, while I also would echo Mrs. McLaughlin's comments about kind of parity with what the county is doing, my feeling is that this is, you know, these are promises we've made, and we have a plan. And with the standard being, there should be urgency on the part of the board if these figures demonstrate that we should be concerned and require urgency. If that's not reflected in these figures, which is why I wanted you to talk about the 15%, then, you know, this is a tremendous benefit that we provide to our employees, and we've made promises, and we market it to new employees. And so adjusting it should be done reluctantly. And I have not made a decision, but I keep trying to get at, you know, whether... whether the performance and the impact on the budget for the county is such that in the future, we need to absolutely make changes to protect and be conservative in our protection for not only providing the benefits we promised our employees, but also protecting that we have the operational funds needed each year to fund the school system. So if, if there is, I mean, that page 68, the last sentence says, "The larger the funded portion of liability, the stronger the condition of the system." That's why I asked whether you consider that to be sort of a reflection of the health of the system. And it seems almost in direct contrast to the 76%, which I think you've, you, has been presented to us, is a appropriate percentage for us to have in terms of the unfunded liability. We have to rely on your expertise. And so that, the difference between the two makes, makes me scratch my head a little bit.
Okay, with that, I have two board members on the go back. Anybody else? I have Mrs. Church and Ms. Huff. Just one second, just one second. Let me have Ms. Hines, then anybody else, Mrs. McLaughlin, who else? And, and I'm, I'm telling you where we are, we are 4:25. We have four board members on the go back. We got to do the next steps. We have two lawyers waiting. We have a closed meeting and we have to come back out for the budget meeting, as promised. We'll do that. And then we cancel the last two work session, that's where we are. So Madam Chair?
Yes, I, I'm concerned that we've, we've made an appointment with, with two attorneys for four o'clock and that we're going to be an hour late for that. Should, if we, if we have a lot more time to spend on this, should we come back to this after our closed meeting? Or can we wrap up within a reasonable amount of time? You know, I just, I-
Ms. Evans, I also, Mr. Moon, assumed that we would go to the budget meeting. And I think that is under consideration. You and I've talked about that. I, I, depending on how long our meeting takes, I do not, I do not feel we can have an adequate conversation if we spend a lot of time in a closed session and then try to come back.
So, Madam Chair, could I, could I, could I do this later? Since I have one, two, three, and then one board member wanted to be off the list. We have three board members. If we could ask them to limit their remarks very briefly and then let's do quickly next steps. Otherwise, they have to wait for us to do this.
All right, well, that's, that's fine, but I, I do fear that we're, we're going to be keeping people waiting a long time.
Mr. Moon, I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll take a sense of board.
We have, we have a decision to make on Thursday on this. And if we try to squeeze it in in the next 10 minutes, I think we have to break and then come back.
Okay, we'll take a sense of board. Those who want to just to do another 10 minutes to wrap this one up and then go to closed meeting versus let's suspend now and go to closed meeting and, and return. Any other options?
So my other option would be that if there's anything else we need to ask of the guests here, ask it now. And then we can come back after closed and have the dialogue between us and Ms. Quinn. And, you know, that way we're not rushing the decision. But I don't think we need to have our visitors stay here any longer. And we can just ask our questions of staff and, and Dr. Lockard. Come back after the closed session, wrap it up.
Okay, two thing, two, let's do whether we want to wrap this one up in 10 minutes versus going up, going up, and, and then, you know, once we make that decision, we'll see whether we could excuse, depending upon the outcome, excuse the outside guest for today. All right, so those who want to wrap this one up in 10 minutes, raise your hand. Okay, that seems to be minority. Okay, those who want to go up right now and then return later on, raise your hand. Okay, those are not voting. Come on, let's do that. Okay, let's do this again, all right? I, I want to, I want to see your hands.
I count for everybody else who didn't vote.
Let's say, but-
Mine was ask staff questions and then-
So let's do.
Yes.
Okay, I don't think, okay. I was going to see whether we can wrap this one up in 10 minutes.
We should try for 10. We can try for 10.
Okay.
With them, just with them.
Okay. I'm going to ask, ask again. I'm going to give you now three, three options, okay? One, to wrap up the whole thing in 10 minutes. Just one, hold on, I'll give you later all the three options. Second is suspend the discussion, go upstairs, keep them here and re-return and continue the discussion. That's the second option. Third option is ask questions of them within next 10 minutes and excuse them, suspend the discussion, go upstairs, finish it and return. All right, those are three options. I'm not going to repeat what I said. I will do number one is the very first one, number two and number three. Hopefully you all understood what number one, two, three were. Okay, number one, number one, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Number two, raise your hand. Number three, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so we'll ask questions and we'll, we'll return. Okay, we're going to, we're going to limit the asking questions to next 10 minutes. So continue asking, Mrs. Church.
Okay, so my first question, because I'm going to try to ask my, my visitor questions. Why not have the CPI, the COLA, the CPI at 100% or the cap at 4% for everybody? If the county does it, why don't we do it? Why wouldn't we do that?
We can't, that was not what was asked us to cause, so we would probably-
Why don't we have it?
Mrs. Church, ask just guests, outside the guests the questions.
Okay, what, what, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. Michael, Michael, you said at some point, we were talking about an active fund management approach versus, you know, basically meeting, you know, the market rate of what the market achieves. And it, and maybe, maybe I inferred correctly. I'm not saying that you implied it, maybe I inferred incorrectly. But it seemed to me that you were saying, that you were attributing that active managers beat the market average. And I'm wondering what, 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 where's the evidence of that? First of all, we, it's not here. It's not, it's not in our plan. We're not, we're not performing at that. So what is it that is an industry indicator that active managers are beating the market?
My, my comment, if I delivered it correctly, was intended to support the thesis that in a, in a overvalued, somewhat frothy equity market, in particular, active managers in a cycle tend to outperform passive managers. In a down market, you've had low interest rates forever, unlimited easing by the Fed, zero interest rates and equities, principally domestic equities in the US, that have just absolutely had a complete terror. It's, it's been around. So I'm not suggesting in this to your 4.8 or 4.9 over the seven or 10 years, whichever the number was, that, to be clear, that active managers have outperformed passive managers. It's quite the opposite. The question is, is this the time to make the change to, to passive? So I was just, I'm talking about risk management and downside protection in some markets that appear to be extended. So it's more of a timing thing. And it's not versus, by the way, I don't mean to imply it's one versus the other. They're all available, they're all options that are on the table at all times.
So if you look at the numbers that you have today, our, our active managers have outperformed the passive. Those numbers are, are given to you. If you look at the, the one-year, three-year numbers against the index, that tells you how our active managers have done.
But we can't, we can't choose in, in that particular instance, and this is the, this is the cherry picking that I feel is going on. You say in the one and three year, but, but, but then we want, but then we want to rely on a 20-year to assume our, our, our return rate. So we can't say, well, the active managers in one and three-year outperform, but we're really looking at a seven and a quarter to achieve, you know, that as an optimal rate. And in order to do that, you got to go to 20, because otherwise you're at 4.8. So I, I, I fundamentally have a problem that we cherry pick in some of these presentations the data that best makes the point instead of holistically gives us the lay of the land.
And we did not cherry pick. We picked, you wanted year-to-date, so we gave you the numbers that were available as of, of 2/28. I think, you know, the same could be said of, of harboring on the fiscal year return.
You just, I'm sorry, was, you just stated that active managers outperform passive management on one and three years. Did you not?
Yes.
That was, that's, that's what I was referring to in terms of cherry picking.
Can, can I maybe just make a comment to try to answer the question you asked Michael differently? To me, there, there's an infinite number of ways you can manage this portfolio, both in terms of how you allocate assets to buckets and then how you implement within each bucket. The whole discussion about moving to a 60-40 portfolio to save money on fees, I think to me and to most investors that have been actively involved in decision-making, is, is kind of a red herring. And, and the reason I say that is because, just listen, no, just listen very carefully. It's, it's not an all or nothing discussion, right? Going passive, so the first, the first thing that we assume, admit that I maybe think is missing, is the idea that every asset class can be passively managed. And they can't. So you can't passively manage real estate and you can't passively manage private equity. Those are two of the highest returning categories you have exposure to. So if you want to go passive and eliminate those, then you're going to have an implication for your return.
Right, but if we also, if we had broadened the US equity, then we would have had a better return. Now granted, that's, I, I agree that that's given the market conditions that existed. But to go to Ms. Huff's point, the same market conditions existed for all the peers and we're not performing at that rate. So I, I'm sorry, I decry the fact that, that we're saying the active management is meeting, is meeting the rate of return on investment when we look at our, at our peer class.
You were, you were performing in line with your peers over the seven, 10-year period and you're in almost the top third of your peers over the 15 years. We can look at whatever time period you want, those comparisons are cyclical. Three or four years ago, all of the numbers were in the top quartile for, for Fairfax Teachers. And we've had two and a half now, three years, where your returns have been below average. And so now the endpoint sensitivity is looking negative.
Okay, all right, so, so I agree, I don't know who said multiple buckets earlier, and I all agree with you. There are two different, this is a bifurcated discussion and it has been, I think, Ms. Corbett Sanders, you said, we, we have conflated the question of allocation decisions with fee abatement. And, and the problem is, is that, and I, and I believe, Ms. Cor, you said earlier, it was 16 million on 2 billion. But does the, does the cost per person management, you said it was 100 and something compared to peers of 300, does that include the 30.3 positions?
Yes, that, that includes the, that includes our staffing.
But it doesn't include the fee?
Doesn't include the investment management.
Okay, so, so-
But we have, we've been to mark ourselves on that as well.
I mean, the total, the total cost, it's the total cost of managing. It's the positions plus the fees that, that, that we're in a position of having to abate risk. So now it's not just abating fees. It's not just, you know, look, would a broader US equity market look better for a rate of return? Now you're holistically trying to abate risk. And, and fees are risk when, when the long-term asset class is looking like, okay, well, you may not be able to passively manage all asset classes. Then potentially, if we can abate fees, which abates risk, then you look at a different asset allocation so that you can more, more passively manage. And maybe you can't passively manage everything. Maybe 60-40 is the wrong one. Michael, you, I mean, you tended to indicate that at, at an industry level, that's about the right mix to get the return that we're looking for.
No, I did not.
No.
What, what I was suggesting about 60-40 is, it is a long-dated historical comparative measure using Equity Index and Fixed Income indices, okay? I did not mean to suggest that's an optimal.
Oh, okay, okay, so it's not, the 60-40 isn't necessar, that's just, you know, just for comparison.
It's a comparative benchmark.
Okay, okay, so I, I guess where I am, colleagues, is I'm at a Rule of 90. I'm at COLA, at COLA of 100%, CP, at CPI, cap of 4% for all employees. And I am at maximum risk mitigation that is holistic in the picture. We've got to acknowledge that we have, you know, a budget. I just checked fiscal 16 to 17. We went up 10.3 million on our positions at 5.2% from 16 to 17. We went up 6.7, 17 approved to 18 proposed. And once you hit the fiscal 17 revised to the 18 proposed, we're up nine and a half million on this line item, which is up 4.7%. Something has to be done to, to mitigate the, 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 the total impact of cost between the positions and the fees. And if you're not going to say, look, and, and I appreciate that you only have 28 or whatever positions in the office, you have another 1.3 positions in financial services and another position in, in payroll. So it means 30.3 positions any way you cut it. And unless you're going to cut from 30.3 positions to abate cost, then you got to abate fees. It's one or the other. And, you know, whether it's, it, it's an alternate allocation in terms of, of where the assets are going, whether it's passive versus active with a whole lot less fees. But there's something that has to yield, there's something that has to get there.
Okay, now I have three board members, Karen Corbett Sanders and Tammy Delana Kofax and Ms. Perchek. Hopefully this doesn't, this list doesn't grow. Karen Corbett Sanders.
In the interest of time, I really think we need to bifurcate this discussion. Let's focus on what decision has to be made on Thursday night as the columns up here. And I think we've heard from all of the board members on where they're at on those various columns. The second piece of it is next steps of going forward and doing an assessment of whether or not we are managing the fund for the long term.
Is that a question?
And so my question is, would you see some utility in having a task force which would address the long-term approach to how we're managing this fund as a, as an appropriate next step? Because I think that's where we're getting caught up in comparisons of risk and how risk has been managed, both in the rearview mirror, but how we're also going to do it in the future, when really all we need to do is make a decision about this for Thursday night.
So, anybody wants to respond to the question or retory, or not? Thank you, then I'll go to next, Ms. Delana Kofax. It's a question, okay? We're not, we're not there yet, it's the next step, maybe. Question time.
This is not a question, but as your co-meeting manager here, I do want to remind my colleagues that the reason this presentation is bifurcated, that we as a board requested fund management analysis of, of these alternatives. That is why we are here. We requested that this data be presented. I thank all of you for your time and attention. We are in a, a place right now where we probably have too much in one day scheduled. And so we're, we're hurrying. And I think for, for, for my, for my comfort level, I, before we would go to a task force, I would like to have a deeper, broader conversation with all of you before we go to that point. It is correct that we are needing to make suggestions, I mean, we are needing to make suggestions to Dr. Lockard on how to proceed with the budget based upon these three columns up there. The, the hope was that this analysis, even though it's deeper and it goes off tangentially into some ways that, that we may not need to touch upon to make some of these decisions. But that was the hope, that, that this would help us with these decisions. So colleagues, you know, we need to understand what we ask for, where we are, how, why our guests are here. And that's where we are.
Okay, thank you, that was a good question. And I have Ms. Perchek for a question.
It's not a question, I second the discussion about next steps. And do appreciate that, I think this information helps inform my decision for Thursday, but I appreciate that we can postpone that, that other portion.
Okay, with that, thank you for your, your presence and- Okay, with that, thank you for your presence and presentation and answering all the questions we have raised, and you are now being excused, so that we can...
Thank you all very much. Good luck for the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Evans?
Yes, and thank you again for the excellent presentation. I am going to make a motion, I move that the school board go into closed meeting to discuss and consider personnel matters pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss and consider a candidate's employment as division superintendent pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and three, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7, specifically personnel issues. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Pelchek, seconded by Mr. Moon, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, and we're going into closed meeting.
Can we clarify if we're going to be coming back for a budget discussion as well? Because I know people in the audience...
So, actually, Ms. Darnakofex and I talked before, and the sense was that by the time we're done, that we probably won't be able to have the budget discussion that we, that we need to have. So, one of the, our thoughts was, and let me throw this out to board members, if we would be available to come in early on Thursday before our board meeting to have the discussion that, it's probably going to take about two hours, is that approximately right, Ms. Darnakofex?
Yes, it is, Ms. Evans.
So, if we were to do that on Thursday, Mr. Wilson?
I appreciate the, that we're all getting a little tired here, but I would encourage us to stay, if we, you know, I mean, let's try to finish upstairs efficiently and come back, lots of people have been waiting, and I would rather stay this evening and have the budget discussion.
We do still have to do next steps on ERFC, but that should be quick, correct, Mr. Moon?
You know, I have no control of my colleagues.
Okay, all right. That being said, well, I guess let me get a sense of the board, how many people would like to, to do the budget work session tonight? We have postponed, we're going to have to reschedule our governance work session and our audit work session, but let me get a sense of the board, of, I guess, the two options that we have is to just keep on going tonight for budget, or number two, schedule a budget work session for before our regular meeting on Thursday, which would mean we would start somewhere around 3:30 or 4:00. So, those are the two options. How many would like to just continue on tonight? One, two, three, four, five, six, how many would like to do it on Thursday? One, two, three, all right, so we'll continue on tonight with the, and so, we don't, for members of our aud... Well, with six people who's, yeah, I mean, six people said, come back, and... Okay, but more people, all right, so, for members of the audience, I'm afraid we don't know how long really we're going to be upstairs, so...